In your life.
Okay, thank you. So this is Julia Schreiner Oldham. We're going to go ahead and begin our school committee meeting on March 19th. Robin, do we need to take, do we need to say who's on?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so we have Robin Coyne, Barbara Scotto, Ben Lemus, David Proman, Helen Charlefsky, Jennifer Monopoly, Mary Ellen Norbin, Rob Mullin, Sharon Abramowitz, Suzanne Fetterschfield, and Susan Wolf Dikoff. And Michael Glover will also be joining us. He's just working on the link to participate. So we're going to start, we have a consent agenda first, which is an acceptance of a gift of exercise equipment, acceptance of grants from the Mass Department of Education and Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, and the award of a three-year school bus contract to Eastern Bus Company, and approval of the Driscoll School Project proprietary item. Does anyone have any questions on that? Or should we hear from either Mary Ellen, or is it Mary Ellen who's going to speak on the bus contract? Ben, are you prepared to talk on?
Are there questions?
Oh, yeah.
It's a consent item. So it's a consent item. So are there questions?
I think since none of us can actually see it, I don't know if it was included. Yes, it was. Okay, never mind.
This is, this is our five-year renewal of our contract for our buses. So it went through 30B. We did a bid opening. That's why you put it on the consent. The school committee needs the value, needs to sign the contract and award the contract.
Mary Ellen, how much did this contract go up from our last bus contract?
Oh, I don't know. It's, let me check. It's not in the cover. Matt didn't put it in the cover memo?
There isn't a cover, cover.
There isn't a cover memo anymore?
Maybe while she's looking, I can speak to the proprietary Driscoll piece.
Thank you, Helen.
That has to do with a proprietary geothermal well system that the project is asking us to approve. It seems to be a more efficient one to use. I don't know if Susan wants to add to that.
No, there have been a fair number of conversations about the right, the most cost-effective piece of sort of technology. There was an extended conversation at the Building Commission meeting about this as well. So I think we're, unless we're going to replicate that conversation, they felt very comfortable that this was the right approach.
Right.
Are we waiting for Mary Ellen to get back to us about the bus?
I think so, but maybe we should.
You are, but it's gonna, you are, and it's gonna take me a little while.
So why don't we hold that item, vote the rest, and we can come back to it at the end?
So moved.
Second. Julie, you're on mute.
All right, so we need to take roll call vote for all votes. So on all the items except for the bus contract, Ms. Scotta?
Yes.
Ms. Proman?
Yes.
Ms. Charlefsky?
Yes.
Ms. Monopoly?
Yes.
Mr. Glover, we're voting on the consented items.
Yes.
Dr. Abramowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Fetterschfield?
Yes.
And Ms. Wolf Dikoff?
Yes.
All right, so then next we have, from Mr. Lemus, we have an update on the school district closing in response to COVID-19.
Okay, folks, let me just, I'll have my notes here. Here we go. So I'm gonna, I don't, sorry. We've been doing a lot of things very quickly, so I don't have a written update for you, but I will give you a verbal update on a few different areas. We are working through union agreements with BU and ASME to make sure that, as you folks all decided, that our employees would be paid in full in regular intervals during the closure, and working through some details of both of those groups on exactly what that means. So, and working actively and diligently, I want to thank Sharon, Jennifer Monopoly, and Susan for being a great part of the team that's worked with BU. We're hoping to come to an agreement soon. If anyone wants to add to that at all, Sharon, Susan. You don't need to.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, okay, great. So communication outreach, our communication outreach is sort of hitting full stride at this point. I can't, unfortunately, I can't share with you a web browser, because what I'd like to show you, I don't think I can anyway. What I'd like to show you are both the, no, I can't do that right now. The public page, which has been, we have a whole section of our website now that is about the closure and coronavirus, and it has updates on learning resources, which we shared, yeah, two days ago, I think, special education services, food resources, sorry, mobile information, and then a page that has all the updates that are coming from the district. In addition to that, principals are giving updates on a regular, on a regular basis to their schools. And we are trying to give updates every couple of days. We're also working very closely with the Emergency Operations Command, and whenever we're putting out a communication, they are putting the highlights in their daily releases as well. Second here. So that's going quite well. And then on the staff side, I've been communicating regularly with staff as well, and of course, principals have as well, to their staff. And we have launched, I think it was yesterday, a revamped webpage for staff on our internet, our staff portal, which I would like to show you, because it looks, that also has a wide variety of information. One second here. Including their health, topics, their health and safety, mental health and self-care resources, how they can stay informed, links to helping your students stay engaged, details about their compensation, reporting to work, cleaning, sanitation, you know, Chromebook access, and a wide variety of information they can get at one page, basically, and it links to other resources. So I've had a lot of support on both those from Mike Chan and others, but that's going quite well, we think, and sort of up and running now. A few other updates. As you know, we're providing lunch and breakfast to families who are in need and who face food insecurity. Those are open to our families who are getting free reduced lunch, but we're also expanding that to other families who may become eligible or do face hardship these days in terms of food. And that's happening, those distributions are happening on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and they're happening at Baker, VHS, Coolidge Corner, and Pierce. They got that right. And we share, or distributed about 40, just over 40 meals yesterday, and we'll, we're at it again tomorrow. A real big thank you and appreciation to our food service colleagues who are doing that and doing a great job with it. Those buildings that they're in have been cleaned, and we're continuing to clean, disinfect the areas that they're working in, including the, you know, the obviously kitchen, any pathways outdoors. We are distributing the food by, to grab and go. So they're handing it off to family members who come, you know, to the school, who stay outside. And tomorrow we'll have distributed tables, where our employees put them on tables and other folks grab them from those tables. So we're very conscious of keeping our employees and our families safe and healthy, and doing it in a way where everyone's protected. I think there are a couple of questions here, so I'll pause and take questions from Ms. Charlefsky, then Ms. Dikoff.
So my question is, I think this is terrific, and I think it's really important for our community. I'm wondering, do you have to go to one school or another, or can you go where, I mean, if you're a high school student, you live in the Baker area, can you go to Baker?
Yeah, so we have an online ordering process. So people designate where they want to go. They can go anywhere.
Okay, and if somebody doesn't have that online capability, how would?
We're not turning any, any of our families away.
We're not turning, so anybody who went to any of these schools could probably get food if they needed it.
If we have the food available, you know, and.
Better to order and all that, I agree, but.
Right.
To set up the system.
Yep. And at this point, you know, in the future, it's possible our food service and our kitchens could be used for a broader community support on this, but at this point, it's just for our families. Ms. Dikoff, if you can get a question?
Thank you. First of all, again, sort of a tremendous thank you to our food service workers and custodians and everyone else who's involved in setting this up. It's just such an important piece to making sure that this, this crisis really is affecting people as, in a way that we're doing is what we can do to minimize that impact, which is, which we know is tremendous. Two questions. One is, have we thought at all about bringing the meals to other locations? I know there were ideas about potentially bringing them to Brooklyn Housing Authority, common rooms, or things like that, or, number one, and number two, and that might be kind of phase two, I know we just needed to get it up and running first. And then I think the second question was, when you had said that not just is available not just to people who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, but people who may become eligible, can you just say a little bit more about what, I'm not sure I understood what you meant there?
Well, for folks who come, you know, either come to us electronically or come in person, we have applications for free reduced lunch there in case they need to be, or, you know, people obviously, you know, losing pay, some may be losing employment, obviously. So we just want to make sure that we're open and available to folks who are facing that hardship, whether or not they qualify last week, or qualify today, or qualify next week. In terms of your first question, so through the Emergency Operations Command, there has been some discussion, initial discussion, I should say, on, you know, could we, should we be dropping things off, those off? Excuse me, we don't have the human power to do that at this point. We may, we're trying to get that. And then in terms of working with, excuse me, Brooklyn Housing Authority, we are actively working with the Thrise program as we have all year, and I think, I think, and they are, they work in very close partnership with the housing authority. So I think, I think they're really focused on that area at this point. I think it's certainly possible for us to deliver some as well, but I would say that we do need to make sure we have staff who can do that, and, you know, we're concerned about our staff's health, and we're concerned about putting them in harm's way, and we're also concerned about supporting our families in this time of need, especially with food. And so that's sort of a balance, a bit of a balancing act that we're, that we're trying to work through. Other questions about food delivery, drop off, pickup? Okay, I'm gonna keep going. I'll go through a variety of topics, and then if there are more, please ask questions or stop me along the way.
Just a quick question, sorry, I had trouble muting. Are other individuals able to pick up for someone else? So if someone's homebound or quarantined or doesn't have access to a car, are they able to designate someone else to pick up for them?
I don't know in terms of a form if we're, if we say that. I can't imagine, I would imagine that if someone's ended up picking up for so-and-so, and, you know, it would be fine. I don't think we're gonna turn anybody away for that, you know?
That's right. Someone had asked, someone had reached out to ask, and I didn't know the answer to that, so I'll let them know.
Okay. So the cleaning of buildings, so we are, actually, let me, let me jump to the, one more piece here. I think probably the most important piece that folks are really thinking about, which is student learning and engagement and connection. So so far, our coordinators, while we're continuing to work with the BU on this and get some real clear guidelines, expectations nailed down, our coordinators have been working with the office, and the Office of Teaching Learning have been working together, or working at the same office, sorry, to provide resources. We got out a bunch of those a couple nights ago with real guidelines, frameworks, resources. The principals distributed more today, or they're sending some out that we, they've also organized with additional resources. What we're really thinking there at this point is we, sorry, going a little too fast for myself here. We put out grade band approaches that talk about different ways of, you know, framework, guidance, daily schedule, learning resources, engagement, things about self-care, work on mental health, and activities, like activity, so of resources, opportunities, online resources for K to 2, 3 to 5, and 6 to 8. We are heading towards, I believe we're heading towards a place where grade-level teams at the schools will be organizing work for all their students in that grade in K to 5, where we'll have some common work or expectations, or rather, opportunities for learning, engagement, enrichment across the whole grades in 6, 7, 6 through 8. So for example, what we're hoping to get to is, expecting to get to is, these six, some sixth-grade math teachers, for example, would work with our coordinator, Kathy Hubbard, to provide materials, resources, enrichment opportunities for, for all sixth-grade, all students in sixth-grade math, okay? Or the science coordinator, work with some, some teachers to provide resources across the schools, across all schools for seventh-grade science, that sort of thing. So, because there's a different approach, obviously, between K to 5 and 6 to 8. And then the high school would follow a similar approach to what I described for middle school. So those are still very much in the works and figuring out those details. Yeah, let me pause there. Any questions? Suzanne, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah, so thank you so much for this, Ben. Just to give us a sense of timing, when some materials have gone out this week, more materials next week, what are we thinking?
We are hoping, so that was, we've been talking phases, okay? So phase one is what we've put, put out yesterday. Part of phase one was, I think we have just, or just, just about to email families about health, self-care and wellness resources. So that's a part of phase one. That's coming from the Office of Student Services. And then phase two would be what I just was describing, this sort of more granular, or more sort of focused approach. And I'm really, really hoping that we will get that done, and folks will start getting materials on Monday. Okay, that is, is what we're in for.
And do we have a policy about grades during this time? I think we need to do that work. I think some systems are saying no grades will be given out. I don't know if we've had that conversation, or if we've made any decision about that.
I don't anticipate that folks will be grading work.
Okay.
That, that is not a final decision, but that is my anticipation, and that would be my expectation.
Okay, right. And I would guess we're gonna get guidelines from the state as terms of testing, perhaps the state testing will be suspended?
So yeah, two things just that are connected, because they're both have to be changed by the legislature, MCAS, and then also the Student Opportunity Act filing. They're both set by state law, and in order to get relief from either one of those, or both of those, there has to be legislation that changes that. So I know that the Department of Ed and others are working actively on that. You are welcome to chime in on that effort, if you like.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Other questions about that right now? So, yeah, so more, more to come, a lot more to come on all of that learning and engagement and enrichment that we hope to support our schools with. I think Ms. Fetterschfield has another question.
I'm sorry, I just, you know, the other thing that seems to be confusing, of course, to all of us, is kind of this notion of distance learning versus remote learning. And, and perhaps at some point, we don't have to do it right now, it might be helpful to kind of figure out the differences. And, you know, certainly we can do learning and remote teaching. Distance learning is, is a whole nother ball of wax, and it's not something that you have said before that we are geared up for or prepared to handle. So I just, people probably need maybe a few words about that. Other systems are doing remote learning, remote teaching, but not distance learning from a K to 12.
Yes, so I'm happy to say something, okay, Ms. Dikoff wanted to say something, but I don't even, at this point, I am actually just futtled on the, on the terminology and what people think is remote or distant, or even those two terms, and not because I'm not knowledgeable, but because I think when people say that, they, two people can say the same words and mean very different things. So that's, we'll have to clarify that. You know, I think it's gonna be, there's a wide range of opinion in our community on this topic. And I think it's gonna be, and I think our teachers believe, very difficult to replicate in any way, shape, or form what happens in our classrooms, and there should be no intention for us that we have an ability to do that. There's a reason we have one, you know, interaction, small groups, one-to-one, our interaction with our teachers and our students, because that is, you know, the way that we value learning, and that just will not be replicated in any way. I don't think folks are asking for that, but what we produce and what our teachers are able to do, support students in terms of engagement, enrichment, learning, and also just connection, will unfortunately be, be, be far from that over the next few weeks. But they will do a fantastic job. I'm confident of that. They will go above and beyond, and, and they will also have to balance, also have to balance the challenges they're facing with their families, their own health, their own situations. And I never want us to lose sight of the fact that our teachers, our educators, our special educators, our paraprofessionals, our food service workers, our custodians, all of our colleagues, all of us, are certainly humans, and are challenged and face the same anxieties. I think that says it all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Dikoff?
Thank you for saying that. A couple thoughts. Though, one is that historically in Brookline, as long as I've been active here for about 20 years, the education technology has been a bit of a discussion, but really, as Ben said, the notion of in-person relationships and small class sizes have really, if not every conversation, almost every conversation been prioritized over investments in education technology and advancements in, however you want to describe it, flipped classrooms, distance learning, there's a whole variety of ways, you know, personalized learning, there's a whole variety of ways to do it. And I think over the last number of years, consistently, the teachers and the parents in this district, in my observation, have been really, really focused on the relationships and the quality of relationships in the building, and, and not too much screen time for kids, not focusing on education technology. I do wonder if, you know, this, it's certainly a ripe time for that conversation. Again, as, as we always, it's sort of an ongoing conversation. But I do, I don't want people to be surprised that we don't necessarily hire for people who are outstanding at education technology, although many people we hire are. That's not, again, it's just not been a priority of this district. And so I think that, again, some people think that's great, some people think that's awful. So I do think that as we sort of go into this brave new world of the next number of weeks, not only do we need to kind of approach it with a spirit of generosity and a spirit of, kind of, we're all in this together, teachers, staff, parents, students, first responders, just every, we're all trying to do this together. And I think that the, the flip side of that is that as the educators start to develop materials and start to have interactions, and they're learning also what is and isn't working in this time period, that, you know, that we all learn as a school committee also, and that we, we get presentations about what is happening during, you know, in the, in the various grade bands, and, and how people are innovating and what we're experimenting with. And so I do think that it should just be a fully transparent conversation about, about what's happening and how it's working, and what pieces are driven by individual teachers, what pieces are driven by grade bands of teachers, what support the district is providing, how students are faring, especially our more vulnerable students. So I just think that this is, there are so many pieces to this conversation. Suzanne, I really appreciate the question, and I, I hope that we can, you know, once we get past sort of the first wave of this, to the, obviously there may be other things that we're focusing on if the public health crisis deepens, but I do hope that we can have this conversation as well.
Ms. Scotto?
One of the things I want to say is I think that, that people are doing a very good job of thinking up activities and sending out all kinds of things. I'm not even necessarily talking about Brookline teachers, but all over the web you're seeing, these are things you could use with kids. And I just hope that as part of what we're doing is to have people think about things that don't involve machines. What can you do at home without being on a screen? And I think that's really important. There are lots and lots of things. And I think we need, as we're planning what work we want students to do, we need to include that. I mean, one thing could be go out in the yard and see how many signs of spring you can find, or look out your window. If you were an artist, what would you paint from there? And have them do activities and think and explore and read, and downplay a little bit of what is online. It's not that I don't like online, but I like a mixed, a mix of things. And I think it's better for kids and adults if they, if their days are filled with a variety of things that are not all on the screen.
All right, other questions? I've been told by Ms. Charlefsky that the lighting, my lighting isn't good enough, so I'll keep an eye on the lighting. All right, so a lot, lot more, lot more to come on, on the learning, on the engagement. I will say there, there's so much activity going on already, things like, you know, principal at night reading a good night, a good night story, or nighttime story to, to their, their students. I think yesterday, the Coolidge Corner School, Jen Buller had 100 students chime in. 100 students, you know, tune into that. That's all the system could handle. But also, you know, community meetings, that sort of thing, community announcements going out live, and that's just, you know, I don't even have no idea how much folks are already doing to support our students, and, and that'll increase as the time goes along. So I want to make sure folks know that.
If I could just add to that, because it's in the same thing, I think we should give a shout out to Jamie Yadda, who's had a story hour every day for kids. It's, I've watched it on Facebook. She's just fantastic, and I really appreciate her doing that.
Great.
Ben, we've received some questions about whether the, I know that there are, there have been some teachers, some principals who have done things, and we've also heard that there has been a directive from your office telling teachers that they are not allowed to reach out to students. Can you confirm whether that's something that actually happened or not?
Let me be really clear about that. Over the weekend, with many different conversations, so we started working with BU last week, and TruBo and I worked together on language to address a specific concern we both shared, and that was teachers, the concern about teachers being or potentially being overwhelmed of, about personal requests, individual requests from families or parents for work for their own child, or classroom children. And then also a concern about teachers putting, some teachers putting a lot, a lot of work out, another's not able to for personal circumstances or whatever reasons that they have. And so I heard that concern from. That they have. And so I heard that concern from Dr. Ron Trubo. It's a concern I have too. And so my. Both the language, excuse me, of which we both worked on together and I sent out, did ask, excuse me, people to refrain. From asking teachers for that work at this point until we can get a more coordinated approach together. It, it wasn't meant to freeze things, but to really help parents and teachers really respect. The needs of parents, sorry, teachers at this point to sort of take care of their own and help us all sort of get on the same page and, and work together on this. So. That was something that I worked through very closely with the BEU and. Think it was a good message, like all messages, it's open to interpretation and I think, you know. Things might have gotten a little misinterpreted of that, but the intention there I think was solid and sound and, and well-intentioned. Yeah, Ms. Fetter's Bill.
I just also want to give a shout out to PTO workers and writers of the newsletters. They've been. Very good about, again, passing on resources to families and, and staying in touch and communicating. I think Driscoll's doing it every day. So it's, it's just great to see the community come together and everybody pitch in and help. So I want to give them a shout out for the PTOs.
Yes, absolutely. There are a lot of folks pitching in and I don't even, I, I personally don't even have a, a sense of, of the fraction of it. It was only the emails I get, but I'm not, I'm just not, I'm not in that realm. So I, folks, I think it's likely you folks are getting even more of those and aware of all the great stuff that's happening. Going to move on to other, very important, but maybe perhaps more mundane issues like the cleaning of buildings. So at this point by tomorrow, all of our buildings will have been cleaned and disinfected. We are also prepared, we, we know that folks may come into buildings again, whether it's, you know, food service workers or other, other reasons. And so we're also, we will also be doing another cleaning as necessary, disinfection as necessary as we go forward. So that is, that's not, the cleaning, disinfection of our buildings is not a one-shot. Deal is what I'm trying to explain. Mentioned special education resources. So our Office of Student Services has already put up quite a number of resources for special students with. With special education needs will continue and they have done sort of a phase one on that, I believe. I think I have that right. And we'll be putting up more as well. I mentioned about the self-care resources that are already up. I think the last piece that I want to touch on is just the medicine distribution. So that happened yesterday. So families who needed, who left medicine with their nurses were able to pick that up yesterday. And had some good, but not, you know, grandiose results on that. If it's necessary to do it one more time, we're, we're certainly happy to. So those are the, oh, I guess a couple more things. Our staff, Matt Gillis, Mary. Erin Cooley are supporting the Emergency Operations Command. Mary Ellen is actually on it. She's been handling logistics for the last couple of days. Out at the EOC, out on Hammond, Hammond, Hammond Street, Hammond Road. And then. We're also working closely with them in terms of supporting our custodians helping out with cleaning and that sort of, those sort of things across different departments. So. That's work that's ongoing. And then I do also just want to thank again, our custodians and our food service workers, which I, who I thanked earlier, but our custodians. Have just been doing tremendous work, both in our schools and others, helping out on call, just really pitching in and doing fantastic work. So we really, really appreciate them and all, and all their service. Are there other topics that folks like me to touch on?
Could I just, could I just add, this is Mary Ellen, could I just add that I also want to acknowledge Ed Clancy, who's really been working with police and fire and. Really coordinating a lot of the custodians and the cleaning effort. And forging a lot of great relationships across municipal departments and. These are one of these times where the school department can pay back the municipal departments for all that they do for us. Because we have expertise and resources that they don't have. So I just want to make sure we also include Ed Clancy in that, in that mix.
And I, I'm sorry, there's just one more group. There, there's some unsung heroes who people don't typically see or too much, but it's the public doesn't, but. Lisa Richardson, our Director of Resources, Casey Miller, Nicole, Mary Ellen. You know, our special education directors, there are just so many people, Matt Gillis, Mike Chan, Erin Cooley, they're folks that. You know, have been working full-time and overtime and double time for the last week plus, you know, through the weekend and. We just couldn't be, we're supporting a lot of people and of course we do that because it's, you know, our life's work, but. Those folks, you know, are sort of. You're just, they're doing, they're doing great, great work and they're a fantastic team. It's an honor for me to work with them. And I just want to make sure I shout out to those. And of course, I know I missed folks, Kalise Wornum, and I go on and on, but just. We have a great team here pulling together and doing a great job to help all of us, support all of us really. So thanks to, thanks to the team here.
This is Suzanne. Did, did you mention the Chromebook distribution?
I don't think it is. Thank you very much. Yeah, so we're doing Chromebook distribution tomorrow. We've been, yes, tomorrow, I think it's between 12 and 1:30 when we're also doing the food distribution. I believe Chromebook distribution, I can't remember if it's at all schools or not, there are a couple of details I'm losing. It may be just at the schools that, I think just at the schools where we're doing the food pickup. We've been actively outreach to folks about who, who may need them, finding out who, who needs them. We've learned that folks are pretty good on internet service and wireless service. And so, but we'll prepare to see if we can help with that as well. As you know Comcast is providing internet service, but we will be. We've been actively cleaning Chromebooks and loading the right materials for them in terms of our access for, you know, depending what, what grade the child is in. We're providing for third grade and up and we'll do our first distribution tomorrow. I don't know the details about how many we're distributing tomorrow, but. Scott Moore and others, Kareem Mateen do and, and let you know how, how that goes and we're prepared to do it more times if necessary. Dr. Bombins?
Ben, we, we, I just wanted to do a time check. We have about an hour remaining on our open session meeting, so I just want to see if we're on track for that. I know that we wanted to talk about. On the budget, the MSBA, and also the interim superintendent search today as well.
Julie, I just want to make a quick recommendation to the school committee and, and get their thoughts. The select board had a really successful experience holding an interactive town hall. With regard to the, the coronavirus pandemic. People had questions about townwide services, people had questions about. Who to contact about things, what the status of certain decisions were. I'd like to suggest that the, that the school committee consider holding something similar. They obviously did it all online, but I'm sure that there are a lot of people who would like to be able to directly question us about. What the status of things are, perhaps possibly early next week. And we can give them the best information that we have available to our knowledge and then. Whatever information we don't have, we can just let them know that we're working on it and try to figure out what people's concerns are. I think it's really important for us to be. Taking on that kind of active listening so that we get a better sense of sort of where the community is in terms of their needs from the schools right now.
I think it's a great idea. We'll talk about it with, more with Suzanne and Ben. Our, our thought initially was that it would be helpful for us to have. Reached, kind of made it through this initial stage of having an agreement with the BEU about work expectations, because a lot of. And at this moment in time, a lot of the questions that we're, we're individually receiving and seeing on public outlets is really related to that. And so hopefully we'll be able to have resolution on that and then. To be able to move forward and, and have a productive town hall and really be able to answer a lot of questions when we have some, some more things worked out. So hopefully next, early next week, timing would work well. Ben, did you have any more updates about the COVID-19 or did we want to go on to the budget? I think you're muted, Ben.
I'm all set.
So are you doing the budget presentation or is that Mary Ellen?
It's really, it's not a presentation, it's an update. I mean. Terms of, I'm sorry, I'm for the, with the second quarter report, that's Mary Ellen. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Agenda says the FY21 budget.
Sure, I'm sorry, I just lost track of the agenda there. So there isn't much of an update on this since our last meeting a week ago. Because a lot's. Remember that was the moment that we started, we closed down school and welcomed a pandemic to our doors. So the next steps as they were last week is for the committee to work through, excuse me. Discuss priorities related to negotiations, related to personnel, related to budget expenditures, which is something we wanted, we intended to do last week. But really, at this point, the budget process in order to go forward still needs that work by the committee. Numbers have not, Mary Ellen, I don't, the numbers haven't changed since, since last week. What you presented to the advisory committee, subcommittee yesterday. Was just the same as we presented to you in terms of the gap we're trying to remedy at this point.
I did not, in the workshop.
What I mean by. Our, our.
Same, yes. Just want to make sure people understand it was, went to school committee, finance subcommittee and advisory was pre the Thursday workshop. Didn't you do that because it wasn't, what the document I had said that it was executive session.
Sure, sure, that's fine. I get it.
We do one. Go ahead. No, I was just going to ask, I think it's just important for us to, maybe this, maybe now, or maybe when we're ready to do it, just to be able to plot out a little bit of a new course. On the budget, given that. Number one, we know that the, this COVID crisis will, there may be savings involved by not running our buildings like HVAC, but there are going to be a lot more costs involved as well. So I think. Understanding at least an initial sense of what those costs might be will be important as we think about. Sort of both the second quarter report, but, but next year's budget as well, but also just sort of as we think about what we were hoping to do last week before all this hit. It would just be good to have a new set of dates to be able to chart that out where people can really express their thoughts about the budget as it stands or stood. What they, what is in there that they might consider, you know, reducing if necessary, what things they might want to add in. Just what changes and priorities the, the committee has. So it could just be helpful to, to get a new set of dates. Try to map that out as well as we can, understanding that things change every, every, you know, few hours or around here right now.
So what I would propose is the work we wanted to do last week and obviously couldn't and can't this week, that we have a committee meeting scheduled next week. That we get back on the horse and do that work next week. And, and we can also give you, as you requested, Ms. Dickoff, a, a timeline there. That's a crucial next step and, and the sooner, the sooner we can do it, the better.
Ben, I just want to clarify, you're saying that next week would give us the timeline or next week would give us the information?
I would, I would like next week for us to do the work that we originally scheduled to do last week.
And do, do you think next week would be the time when we would have a better sense of what additional expenses we might have as part of the COVID crisis?
I know that, I, I, yes, Mary Ellen's putting together a, a, a first swipe at the budget for emergency needs now. And is hoping to get something, you know, by Monday, or he's going to have something by Monday. So, so that's correct.
Are we getting input? Are you getting input from some, you know, if you kind of take a step back to, to the input that you received to get to your budget this time around and talking to budget managers and. Principals, are you getting input from others about what those additional expenses that they might see are, or are we just doing that kind of internally?
We've only, Mary Ellen's been back in town since Tuesday around whatever, 9:00 AM. And so, so no, she hasn't, and also she's, you know, been helping EOC. We haven't, we, actually, I'm sorry, Mary Ellen, you should answer the question, who you've been, if, if you have been able to reach out to any other folks about possible expenditures. Emergency expenditures. I shouldn't answer the question.
Yeah, so part of that is what I'm going to pull together this weekend is specifically one of, what we need to know. So for example, there's a statute that requires us to not pay for services or goods that haven't been received. So it's important for me to go through, and the finance team's going to be in tomorrow with me. We'll go through open purchase orders for services and service contracts, because for the time that our schools are closed and services aren't delivered, we are not legally. Supposed to pay those bills. So I need to find out if there are savings and/or what happens if. Let me give you an example. So if we have students at a private school, tuition private school and the student is home. We won't, shouldn't, can't pay for students' tuition during the time that they're not in attendance. And so we have to work that out with those schools and with DESE and how late are those schools going to be going? Are they going to be going to June 29th? In which case that tuition we would be paid. So there are a lot of questions around contracted services and whether there's going to be any kind of. Surcharges, for lack of a better term, or any savings as well. So the other part is. You know, with three weeks of school ordering for the year. In the balance of the year, you know, does that adjust any of their curriculum they're offering? So that, those questions, I've been trying to formulate what those questions are that I need to ask all week. And I'll have those out probably over the weekend and be getting information. During next week, which is why Monday it's going to be sort of a first pass of this is what I need to identify, this is what I've identified and this is what needs to still be identified.
I would say if it, Tuesday's fine. Because you don't need to work all the way through the weekend, please. Just fine. We, we need to.
You're good, Susan. Okay. And then Ben, did we have any other update on the second quarter report or is that also following along the process?
I guess it'd be helpful to get the committee's sense of next Thursday and whether we can do the work on the budget that we were hoping, we planned originally to do last week. I see Susan, yes.
Yes. And do we want to have, is Thursday sound like the right time for that meeting or are we wanting to have an additional, a different meeting at some other point in the week to have that conversation?
I don't personally have to be for more meetings. I, I like ones that are previously scheduled and, and doing it during those.
And I would suggest if.
At least since there are different time happenings during the day, I wasn't sure if during the day might be easier for you rather than another evening meeting.
I also support earlier, I also support earlier. Yes, absolutely. Ms. Shalovsky, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest to keep it on Thursday, but maybe make it earlier, that, you know, we can maybe spend the evening with our families.
I fully support that.
Jennifer, I know you have obligations related to school. Does that work for you or do you, is evening better?
I mean, I would prefer to keep things sort of regular for me with my school, my work schedule and it would be better if we could maybe do four. Thirty or something, but I will be, I am back at work.
It is challenging to do things during the day. It's just FYI, just because my wife is working, so if she's. Working at a time, somebody has to watch the kids, that might be me. It's a lot easier after five o'clock.
I'm also working, I will mention.
So do we, are we, am I hearing then that we, is there interest, what if we were to move the meeting to five next Thursday at five? Does that work for everyone?
Works for me, Jennifer.
Okay, Michael, does that work for you?
That should be fine.
Since I won't be in Barbados, I get it, it works for me.
Sorry, shouldn't laugh on that one.
Oh, it's, there's so much. You have to laugh, you have to laugh or everybody would just be crying.
I do think just to, just to make that meeting as, you know, absolutely. What's the word, on task and productive as possible. I think it's important for us to remember what we were trying to do, which is that. Everybody was going to go through the budget, everyone was going to bring their questions and their ideas, we're going to go around and talk about our priorities. So I don't want us to start. When we get in, in our virtual room, just staring at each other like who goes first. I want people to come to that prepared so that we can really have that as a, a forward motion. Moving the flags down the field sort of meeting.
Yes, and Ben did distribute all those materials at our last, I think it was just a week ago, at that meeting. And so if you don't have those materials still, if you could reach back out to Robin. And so that you can make sure to have a chance to review those materials ahead of time, I think that would be very helpful. All right. All right. Great. So then that brings us next to the MSBA. Helen, did you want to give an update from your capital subcommittee meeting? I think you're muted, Helen.
Just noticed I was muted. That's why I stopped myself. Okay. Yes, we, we met earlier, the subcommittee to discuss the MSBA enrollment letter. It has gone out to many people within the community. I think everybody has gotten a copy of it along with some explanation, an explanation letter from Ben Lummis and a, all the statistics behind it. I guess, I'd sort of like to frame, rather than jumping to the end and saying what we voted, we were, we voted to recommend. I'd like to talk a little bit about the process of what's happened to date, just to remind people. There's been, you know, an initial conversation with MSBA, then a draft letter that they sent us with some information. And Ben, you can chime, chime in at any time if I'm not portraying everything correct correctly. And then a second conversation with them to, to sort of push back their, their recommendation. As I mentioned to the school committee, I think two weeks ago, it's hard to remember now what time it was with everything that's gone on. But their recommendation was for a four-section school at, at Pierce. Ben, maybe you could go a little bit into what you were saying earlier at our meeting with regard to your letter that you put out. I think everybody has a copy of that. Is that correct? Shake your head.
Yes, happy to. So in terms of the memo that I sent to the capital subcommittee and you all have a copy of, just want to highlight a couple of things. Excuse me. Initial enrollment, I showed the initial enrollment projection, for the preliminary one, I should say, which is really a draft that we got earlier in the school year from MSBA. They then came back to us at that point and as, as in the memo, they said, from their projections, we don't need a Pierce school. Meaning zero sections at Pierce, which was surprising to all of us. And we said, that didn't make much sense to us. And what we had then had to share with them and make sure they understood was, one, the, how the, the subsstandard spaces in our, in our, in our room, in our school, sorry. The overutilization of our cafeterias, our gyms, our libraries, our hallways, how we had, had this, had, had so, have, have so many classrooms that are below standard in terms of size, because we've, you know, topped up classes and that sort of thing to make more. Also that we are, beeps have been, you know, pulled out of all our schools to make room for them. And especially also our subsstandard spaces for English language learners and, and special education students. And what we had to impress upon them was that because our schools are so overutilized at this point, that they actually weren't getting an accurate read on what our capacity is. So we shared with them our school capacity. We, as we also pressed upon them, the fact that Brookline historically had usually, it counts 21 class, 21 students per class as an average when, when, you know, building our schools and also enrollment students, and they go for 23 per class average when they're building schools. So with that pushback and giving them more information, they shifted what they said quite dramatically. And they, and then also they adjusted their own initial enrollment projection because we gave them more additional information about planned projects. And the combination of all that information on school capacity and the information of enrollment, they adjusted their enrollment, enrollment projections upward and took the capacity for all the schools we gave them. And the result was that they came back with Pierce as a four-section school instead of a zero-section school, which was a big progress, honestly. Since then, we also have gotten the Crawford McKibben forecast, as you know. And both the Crawford McKibben forecast and the MSBA, MSBA projection, although they differ in the exact projections, they both show a, you know, flattening and then declining enrollment. And so they do show that even as a four-section, especially with Driscoll coming on as a four-section and some of the shifts that we anticipate or could anticipate for enrollment in different zones that that Pierce could, is feasible. We, we believe Pierce can be feasible as a four-section. There are also other factors there in terms of the site use and what's, what size might be better for that, for that property there. So, but I'll pause there and, and say, one last thing I'll say is that we can get in, we will get more, if we enter the feasibility stage with MSBA, and that means really two things have to happen. One, the chair, the school committee needs to sign off on the enrollment letter. And then the MSBA board has got to approve us in their April board meeting to move forward into feasibility. At that point, if we do move forward into feasibility, we'll get more and more detail about what this, what size school fits there, what size school is feasible there. We may not be changing from a four-section, but we will have a much better understanding of both how enrollment continues to go and whether that works on that site. So we pause there and Michelle, if you want to add to that, you can. Please do.
I think one of the other things that went into them coming to the 725 was we talked about the, the increase in development in town and that they weren't, we didn't feel that they were taking that into account in the, in the numbers. And so they somehow gave us 80 kids more in the total to account for that increased development. That, that's another piece. I just, maybe I can tell you, why don't I, we talk about what we ended up voting, we had an intense discussion at the capital subcommittee about this, about the different options, about, you know, could we, you know, we can, you know, what, one of the options being saying, going back to MSBA and saying, you know, let's renegotiate. This is not what we think is right. It was pretty clear from our phone conversations that it was this or they weren't going to do anything. I mean, they, they, they have a number of projects that are waiting in line. We were lucky to get accepted into, into their queue. And I, one, am hesitant to, to try and push that more. We could, we could delay. We would hopefully get an extension. We also run the risk of them saying, well, thank you. We have other districts that are fine with what we're doing and we'll go ahead with that. So that concerns me. I think for me, what is important is what we voted today at capital subcommittee. The recommendation that was voted two in favor and one abstention was to go ahead with the MSBA for the Pierce school, but think about this included in this recommendation was a four-school solution, that being Driscoll four, Pierce four, a ninth school, three, and Baker three. So those, that's, you know, and this would probably be over a five to 10-year period because nothing's going to get built tomorrow. As we all know, these things take time. But if we don't start, we're not going to get there. And my fear is that, that, you know, we could, we could, what some of us might think is the perfect would be the enemy of the good. So I'll, I'll open it up now to comments from people and questions and things like that. But I wanted you to at least know where the, the capital subcommittee came down on this.
So a question that I have, can we accept MSBA funding where they would provide funds for up to the four-section portion and then we do the fifth section ourselves? I recall that there are examples of schools that, for example, for a K six, you can't have an auditorium, but if you really want one, the town can pay for that themselves. Is that an option with the Pierce project?
So my understanding, though we could go back to them tomorrow and talk with them about this, but my understanding is a whole section for school is different than like a, a swimming pool that one school system wanted to, to have or, or an auditorium even, because that's a discrete piece that can be somewhat separated from the rest of the building. Here, when you talk about a five-section school, there are implications for the cafeteria, for the gym, for the, for the entire project. There's implications that we, you know, I mean, it may, more than likely, from my experience, if we were to go for a five-section school there, everything would have to be torn down and built new. That's a much costlier project than if we were to be able to renovate and possibly put an addition or reconfigure some of the parts that are there presently. And that's not what they're looking for, for increased costs.
Ms. Terlowski gave you the explanation, but their answer was, it was a no. We asked them, asked it a couple of different ways. And yeah, it was, it was a no for the reason that Mr. Terlowski stated.
I was the abstention here because I have real issues with this. Currently, we have five sections at Pierce. Going back to four sections, first of all, first of all, means the loss of at least six or seven teachers. Imagine you are starting and think, imagine you are teaching at Pierce and you don't know whether you're going to have your job or not. And parents don't know who's going to be there, who isn't. I mean, it will resolve itself over the years, but that's what you're talking about. You're talking about losing a significant amount of staff. The whole business about increase in development, that they don't think there's going to be a big increase, I think is just plain wrong. If you look around North Brookline, there is talk everywhere about things coming down, things going up, et cetera. And here we are making a school smaller in a part of town where there is in fact going to be a significant increase. The other thing is,
Barbara, can we talk to that one piece, just not making it smaller? So presently today, Pierce is 842 kids. So we're talking about 725. Within Pierce today, there's two classrooms that are 22 and all the rest are 18, 19, and 20. Yes, that's, so they basically probably have more of an average of 18 to, 19 to 20 than are even are 21. So, you know, yes, there are presently five classes. We're able to do that, but as, you know, those, those could be classes of 22 and 23.
Right. They will be up to the maximum.
Right.
If we lose that.
But, but also remember that Superintendent Lummis has been committed and talked about this to making the incoming kindergarten four sections. You know, so that we start to,
Every, every year you lose a teacher. That was some,
There's attrition and there, there, and it, you know, it's not necessarily a loss because we are hiring teachers every year too.
Right. But, but attrition is a natural force. Suppose nobody wants to leave. You have to get rid of somebody. This came up at the school when we were at a listening session, one of our very first listening sessions about how the, how the loss of going from a four to five-section school was not something that they were happy about. Now, you mentioned the fact that it was a small site. Well, the bottom line is you're right. But a, a good architect could deal with that, could,
Not with the playground.
To make it work.
Not with the playground that is smaller than the devotion, the Coolidge Corner School playground.
Well, it, it might be smaller, but that might be something they decide to live with. I don't know. The other thing is, the parents are not going to be happy at all. Look at what happened when we wanted to move some people to Clark Road. The Pierce parents are very politically active. This is not something they want. This is not something we have any guarantee that they would vote on the override floor. And we may end up in a very bad position if we, if we push this. I don't know. I have grave doubts about this and for that reason, I won't vote for it. I think we need to push a little bit harder and see what we can get. And, you know, maybe we can't, but I think we need to, I think we need to try harder and I think we need to look a little more closely at what the development is going to be in our town, not by a consultant who doesn't live here. I just, that would, would, would be a good thing.
Helen, I have a question that relates to what Barbara was saying. I, I have, I'm really, I am really concerned as well about the lack of opportunity that the Pierce community has had to opine on this drastic change. And so I think that there are a lot of people in the Pierce community that don't even know that this has shifted. But, you know, we've, we, we have been talking about it being a five-section school for years. And we know, not only based on what happened with the Clark Road change with Pierce, but also we had conversations over the summer about trying to go down to four kindergartens for this year. And there was a revolt and we received probably 50 or so emails from parents saying, don't, don't fire one teacher. We have to all stay together. We demand to be five sections. We don't want to be four sections. And so I'm, I am very concerned about, especially with what we learned this, this summer and through the Clark Road process about not involving the Pierce community in this sort of decision. I echo a lot of what Barbara has said about how we need the school community to be behind this project for it to succeed and for us to be able to pass the override. And I wonder if there's not tiny, tiny upside of this COVID-19 crisis, which is that we've seen the MSBA has already pushed back several of their deadlines and their meetings. And I wonder if we could reach out and find out if they're, they are already planning on rescheduling this April meeting, which then give us time to, to reach out to the Pierce community to get some input.
Couple of things. So this is not definitive, okay, in terms of the Pierce community. I don't, I don't mean to say it that way. When we first got word and this came to, and I first did a presentation a few weeks ago at the school committee meeting about this, Principal Ryan Miller also, you made sure her staff and her community or her family knew about that. Again, that's not, it's not definitive, but she has not heard any outcry or any concerns from really many, much of anybody about that. I, I don't, so I think it's hard to, I mean, do have some input from, or you do have, they do have the information. She was clear with them about that. They're aware, those folks who, you know, read her emails, and I think most people do, are, so, so folks haven't been in the dark about this. Just want to be clear about that. I think, yeah, let me, I'll pause there.
I think we can certainly reach out and ask. I think they are, in speaking with Mary Ellen, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. You know, they are being more flexible because of COVID. I'm not sure. Yeah, go ahead.
I should, so it's very clear that we have to sign and return, things may change, okay? But sign, return the certification letter, no later than March 25th. Okay. At this point, you do not have planned another meeting between now and then. So if they do not extend the deadline, then we miss the deadline. So there is a real risk of, if you don't, you know, if you, if you don't decide not to go forward tonight, that's one thing. But if you want to go forward, your chance to vote is tonight. So then we can meet that deadline to be on the April board meeting.
So, so I, I have the concerns that I've expressed about the lack of input from the Pierce community on this. And I would say that the other, my other main concern and the reason that I am having extreme difficulty supporting signing the enrollment I am having extreme difficulty supporting signing the enrollment letter that we've been asked to sign by the MSBA is I think that the enrollment report that we received from Cropper and the enrollment study that was done by the MSBA. And not that I think, I know from what we heard from Cropper, that they do not take into account known coming development. And that we are being asked to sign a letter that says that Pierce is being built as a four section school because enrollment is flattening or and or declining. And that we, the information that that is based on is incorrect. And I feel incredibly uncomfortable with with signing that and agreeing to it. And I I do support four section schools. I don't know, because we don't have the information and input from the Pierce community, whether the Pierce community agrees with my desire to have four section schools over five section schools. But I think that the enrollment letter is just flat wrong and I'm incredibly uncomfortable with it. And and I'm, and I, for that reason, I do not support, I personally do not support signing it.
I would add to Ms. Trainer Oldham's point that in building a school, we're looking at the next fifty years, seventy five years. Even if these reports and forecasts are accurate, they don't go that far into the future. So I also worry about expending hundreds of millions of dollars between the various projects we're on. And then we're right back to square one sooner than we think. If we are going to build a project, let's do it right. Let's do it well. I'm quite confident that if by some chance we had a little bit of extra space at a five section Pierce, we would find ways to fill some of those classrooms with all the leases that we have around town still. So I'm very uncomfortable with this short term thinking of, well, we think the numbers are flattening. So let's build in such a way that we're already at near maximum capacity very quickly. Also, if MSBA feels that we are declining and that Pierce could only support four sections, that also indicates that they probably would not be supportive of a three section school. So I'm not sure that from a financial perspective, we could realistically endorse this other proposal that's being raised earlier by Ms. Charlepski about a four school solution. And then especially without having solicited public input. I I do hear what you're saying, Superintendent Lummis, about how there hasn't been an outcry, at least from what you've been receiving so far. But I think if we had a scheduled public hearing and it was very clear that the main topic of discussion would be hearing from the Pierce community about opinions on whether they want to effectively downsize from five sections to four, that might generate a different response. It might, it might not, but I think that it's important. We at least give the Pierce community that opportunity. This is a major decision.
So I, this is Suzanne. I just, I'm with Helen on this. I think that if we turn down thirty to forty million dollars from the state to use towards Pierce, that the community will be quite, the entire Brookline community will be quite upset with us. That this is our due diligence to pursue this, that we need to see if we can't work with the state so that we can get that thirty to forty million dollars towards the school building. We need the money. We need a new Pierce and we need to make it happen. And again, if we have a ten year plan and that includes Driscoll, that includes Pierce, that includes a third, ninth school. We don't know where that would be, how big it would be. I don't think the state's going to pay for that. That would be up to us. And then we would take care of Baker. So it's a four prong approach over a ten year period. And I think that we need to work with MSBA to figure out how to make this work. Because that is too much money for us to just say, no, thank you.
I mean, if you guys remember well, the Driscoll experience with MSBA. You know, there was some pushback by the community and from some parts, not from all, but from some parts. And we would have had the Driscoll school built by MSBA back then. And, you know, they said, wait a minute, you guys don't have your act together. You don't want to support it. We're certainly not going to get into this. And they will read and know what we're talking about. And, you know, we'll, we'll say goodbye. We have other school districts that are ready and able to move forward.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. It's hard to see you, Michael.
I know. Well, it's, it's a long story.
It's okay. It's okay. It's okay. I'm sorry.
One thing I wonder if this is, I do wonder if this is, or I should say it this a different way. If there's a way in terms of thinking about the impacts of a four section school, whether they can be mitigated through the construction process and sort of after opening to to make it less of an impact than say what we were talking about at Clark Road. So you you have a certain, and maybe I'm off base on this and somebody can tell me. But you you have a certain amount of construction period. During that construction period, some students are going to age out and go to the high school. You could sort of, the students coming in, you could begin during the construction period, making decisions about how those lower grades are going to be distributed and where they're going to go. And and maybe you could make some decisions that don't break up families, but that send students that wouldn't be broken up to other schools within their buffer zones or whatever to kind of make those lower grades smaller. The middle grades or whatever they are that come back after construction, you you may be able to do between a combination of working with the lower grades and the students moving on, you might be able to accommodate all of those students who sort of aren't changing location during or or will be in Pierce both before, during, and after construction. I don't know if all that made sense.
Yeah, Michael, it makes sense. And what we have found over the years in every school construction, the population goes down. Parents, incoming parents choose to go to another school, ask for permission to go to another school because they don't want their kids involved in moving around. They, it just, it's happened. It's happened at the Coolidge Corner School. It happened, it'll happen at Driscoll. You know, that is just what happens. And I think that's one of the ways that we will control it. We have talked about a second English language learner program, a second Chinese program. And that, you know, Driscoll has place for new English language learners. So to start that up slowly, not moving kids who are there, but new kids who are coming in. There, there are many ways that the district can work on to help to mitigate the, the what I think people are feeling is being thrown out, whether it's teachers or or students. And that's certainly not our, our aim or goal at all.
Value of, one last thing, is the value of getting into feasibility state phase is that we can study and begin to, you know, delve into the real questions of, you know, design, size, fit in a way we can't with any, you know, through just a public, you know, listening process. That'll, that'll be, there'll be speculation, there'll be, you know, claims, there'll be, you know, just it won't give us the level of information and analysis that feasibility phase would allow us to have.
I think that's really.
Are you saying that during the feasibility stage, if the community gets, has the opportunity to be involved in the process decides that they would rather have a five section school for a four section school, that we would be able to make that change?
No, I, I, no, no, I think that's a foreign question. From all our conversations with MSBA, okay, I have no inkling, and I think Ms. Charlepski would agree with this, that they will shift from a four section school. Okay, it would be a question about whether, it would be the community figuring out whether a four section school with MSBA is more appropriate than a five section school without MSBA.
The only thing that this letter allows us to do is to go into feasibility, select an architect, and together with the architect and the school building committee, look at the site, figure out what is feasible there, and then come back with a number and a the cost for this project that will need an override anyway. I mean, it's not like it's, you know, this is not something we can do in the budget. Good news is, I saw just recently, we did get AAA bonded, which is excellent.
I am concerned that concerned that's going to be difficult to build support for this project around town if we're ultimately spending over three hundred million between Coolidge Corner School, between Driscoll, between Pierce. That's at least three hundred million between those three combined and essentially only adding the five classrooms at Ridley. If that's, if that's really our only.
Nine classrooms at Driscoll and the classrooms at, and having a building that's ADA accessible and a fifty year old building being modernized.
I understand that, but a lot of other people are looking at this from a classroom capacity perspective. And many of our presentations are about classroom capacity. And this essentially is almost, we're basically swapping one section of Pierce for one section added at Driscoll. I think that's going to be a very tough sell to the public. I do hear what you're saying about the disability access, improve common areas. That's certainly very important. For the most part, I think the concern around town had been around classroom capacity and spending over three hundred million without really adding to classroom capacity. I think that's going to be very difficult to persuade people that that's the correct direction to go in.
Remember also, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying, but I, I, I think we could be, end up spending five hundred billion without any help. You know, so.
Helen, wouldn't it be better for us to get to know that, to to reach out to the Pierce community to explain that if we want to go forward and get the thirty million dollars from MSBA, that this is the way that it, I just.
So what we.
Having learned from the last six months, I, I am incredibly concerned about us moving forward without input from Pierce community.
So if we do that, let's say we schedule a meeting for next Monday, an interactive session. We would have to schedule another meeting for the school committee or maybe after, I think we need time to 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 think about it. I just, I worry about the dead, the twenty fifth is Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we could see, we could reach out to MSBA and see if we could get back to them by Thursday. Or Friday would be because we'd have to vote on Thursday.
Well, today, we just received, we just received the letter from them today about the, I forwarded it to you, about them pushing back their deadline from.
I mean, we can try. I mean, we can certainly try, but we.
Why don't we start there and and just follow up and say, hey, we, we received this letter saying you were bumping this meeting. Are you bumping ours as well? And if so, we have, that gives us the time to reach out to the Pierce community without them feeling like we didn't opine, you know.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I I do agree.
Something, I, I actually, it's Mary Ellen, sorry. I had a conversation with Diane Sullivan this week. And so they wanted, so part of the, the deal with them is that they want to know that you are going forward. They know you're meeting tonight and they want to know if you're moving forward. They know the select board is meeting on Tuesday and they're going to want, I have to report back tomorrow and say, this is what's happening. So they were going to give, you know, leniency if it, if the item got taken off the agenda because we're dealing with something that was more urgent. A more urgent matter, like the, like the pandemic that we're dealing with. So I want to make sure, like, they're, they're very firm and we're very firm with me in making sure that they know kind of what, how we're proceeding. And is that in a positive way? So I can give them a call tomorrow. I have Diane, I have her cell phone number. I can give her a call tomorrow and ask her. You know, we would like to make sure we have input from the Pierce community. So if we can get that by Wednesday and have the select board's opinion on, from Tuesday night, their meeting on Tuesday night, then we, then I need to tell her, when is the next time the committee, the signatures are going to get on the letter? I think they're really pushing, they have not decided what they're going to do with their April board meeting in terms of whether they're going to have it virtual, in person, or limited attendance. But they, they were still planning as of, did I talk to her, Tuesday or Wednesday? They were still planning on having their April board meeting because they've, they have projects in the queue. So they know they can't, they don't have time to actually not have that board meeting.
And right, and also the, the board meeting is kind of like different than asking districts to submit very complicated plans during a time to do, dealing with a pandemic. So, you know, it's, 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 they're, they're apples and oranges, really. I, I would.
Do you want to, do you want to hold the committee and see where you're at? If we were to take, I, I just don't know that we would want to do that tonight.
Well, okay, I, I, I would really plead with you folks not to add a public process at this point. More meetings, trying to get a virtual school, you know, virtual town hall, Pierce community, considering what all those families are dealing with by Monday night, when right now it's Thursday night, that would really, that is, I'm sorry, I just, to be clear, I think it's too much to ask our staff, our people, that community. I think, I, you, you, this is not a go or no go in terms of whether we go forward with Pierce as a four section or something else. It is moving the process forward and the town can, you know, can, if you choose to. I mean, MSBA, MSBA wants, you know, wants, we're, we're in, they want a clear message, we're in, okay? Otherwise, they may, may vote against us, but this is not, it's not an end all be all at this point. We don't have, as we have done in all our building projects, we get more and more clearer and deeper and more detailed information at the, at each stage. And the beginning stages here, you do have to take a step to get more deeply into the process and have much more knowledge, information to make than the ensuing decisions at the, at the ensuing decision points.
We had very clear direction on Driscoll from the school committee. The school committee was unanimous in supporting moving forward on Driscoll with MSBA. And it was the Driscoll community that blew it up. So I'm more worried about the Pierce community blowing this up if we don't do what we need to do. I mean, we've seen.
We, we run the risk of blowing it up too, just to be clear.
This is a setup for failure. The Pierce school has not had time to really weigh in on this, number one. Number two, we know they're a school who fights for what they want. And if they don't want this, they are not going to vote for it in the override. And we will have just wasted a lot of time. I don't know what to say. I mean, I think the MSBA is impossible in a lot of ways because I think we could work through this if they were open and willing. But I think as it stands now, this, you're going to see this fail.
Sharon, you had your hand up and then Susan?
Yeah, I've been pretty quiet, listening to all of my school committee colleagues share their thoughts on the matter. And I have to say, personally, I'm fairly torn on the matter. I am actually a relatively new member of the Brookline community compared to many of you. And from the day that I arrived, people were talking about a five section Pierce, right? So I would be one of those people that you're talking about. I think that I, I am of the mind that like, we, we spend a lot of time talking about buildings. They're really, really important. I think space is really important. I think that what happens inside them is more important, always. And, you know, I think that what happens with our students and our teachers is really kind of where it's at. That being said, I'm not, I'm leaning towards going forward with this now. And my reason for this is not because I'm worried about the school committee blowing anything up. And it's not because I'm worried about a Pierce community blowing things up. I think that's a really terrible way to talk about people. People are like, making decisions on the basis of the information that they have and what they think is a reasonable course of actions. And I, I hope that we can kind of constrain that kind of rhetoric, you know, we are community leaders here. But I think more importantly, I, I, I take to heart really what Helen is saying and also some of the things that people talked to me about when I was campaigning for school committee, which is, why can't we have a successful, long term, you know, not progressive in the political sense, but progressive relationship with the MSBA? I personally would like to build a closer relationship and a more successful relationship between the school committee and between the town of Brookline and the MSBA. I would like to hear more about what it is that they have to say. They've gone through their process. We also had independent analysts gone through, go through their process. We can all go back to the video a few weeks ago when I told you what I thought about using three to five year enrollment projections to make determinations about ten to fifty years of development. I mean, I'm kind of not, I still think that this approach is problematic. That being said, we should have a good working relation, knowing what we know about the conditions of our physical infrastructure. We should have a good working conversational relationship. We should have a good, working conversational relationship with the MSBA. There is no reason to abort that conversation now. We do not understand the full scope of possibilities for that conversation. Not just for like what happens with Pierce specifically, but for what happens after Pierce. And there's always going to be an after Pierce. And so there's, there's always going to be some other deteriorating piece of in, physical infrastructure that our kids are going to be walking around in and isn't going to meet whatever their 20th, 21st, 22nd century needs are, right? So like, we need to do a better job of continuing to have thriving conversations with frankly statewide agencies that are trying to support us. And I think that we just need to keep our eye on the ball. We're not making a permanent, long-term commitment. This is not the right time to be having a conversation, it, what a political conversation about whether or not an override is going to be successful or isn't going to be successful. The current stance of the MSBA is that according to their appraisal, based on the current situation in Brookline, this is what enrollment is going to look like in this limited area. Listen, two years from now, we could have substantial governmental turnover. We could have an entirely new strategic plan. We could have an entirely new economic development plan. We could stick a 50-story skyscraper in the middle of Brookline Village. Not likely to happen. I'm, wouldn't recommend it. And I'm fully aware that that isn't going to happen. But guess what happens? In two to three years, that changes our enrollment projections. Okay, and we're still kind of at the early phases of having that conversation with like MSBA because frankly, they don't move that fast. So I'm just going to say, I don't, I, like, as you know, like, capital is not my, my, my strong suit, but like, but having conversations is. And getting help from state, statewide agencies that are trying to act as allies are. And I don't think that we're wetting ourselves to any set of commitments now because I think conditions on the ground are going to change. And I think conditions statewide are going to change. And I'm also mindful of the fact that right now, the state, because of the coronavirus, is making financial commitments that it cannot afford. And that could end up impacting its ability to support capital projects six months from now. So if they're willing to consider having a conversation about writing a very big check with us, then I'm, I am strongly in favor of having a conversation.
Susan, and then we'll give Jennifer a chance as well.
So a couple of things. First of all, I think that our partnership with the MSBA is very longstanding and I think it's very important to all of us. And I think that over the course of time, we should endeavor to always have a project going with them, full stop. And now that Ridley is done, this would obviously be the next logical choice. Pierce has been put off for a long time. At the same time, I know that Pier, that the MSBA takes quite seriously the question of whether or not the community is fully 110% behind a project. And I do think that given this sort of pandemic, we have not really had the time to do that socializing work with them to help them see the implications of the new enrollment report and what that means both for them and for everyone else in town. And so one worry that I have is that if we go forward with this and it turns out that when everyone sort of, ideally, we will all kind of come back to real life at some point after this pandemic is over and it turns out that a decision was made without the community's support, I worry that that might have a problem, that it might create a problem, a reputational problem with the MSBA, that we are trying to move something forward without having done that groundwork. I don't, I, I can see a scenario where that groundwork is totally successful and the Pierce community is behind us 110%. They understand it, they're for it, they, they're, you know, on balance, they, they're ready to go for it. I don't see that right now. And I do think, for better or worse, that part of the reason we have not had the ability to do that work is because of the coronavirus. And so I think it's probably worth explaining to them that for a very long time, we have been, for 10 years, we've been operating under the assumption that Pierce would be a five. And so to have that change a little bit on a dime is just a lot for the community to absorb and to understand all the ramifications of it. So not that, you know, this, the school committee is against it. It's just that I think we just need some time to take the community through this process. And I would hope that to the extent that they are, you know, moving things back a little bit anyway, they will be willing to give us a couple of months on this, just so that we can kind of get, get the community behind us. Not because I think it'll, at any rate, full stop. I, I, the other piece that I think is important is that we need to assess from the community the extent to which people had a lot of hopes and dreams for that site around a beep early education child center, around additional offices for town hall, a number of other things. Somebody wants to put a swimming pool on the roof, fine. So I just think that there are so many different people who had so many different ideas. That is the, one of the most prime piece of real estate in Brookline. And to sort of make a decision about a four-section school without really having, it's the heart of our, one of our financial district, business districts. I just, I really do think that we need to kind of bring everyone along so that we can represent to the MSBA that yes, the school committee has done our due diligence in a time when we had people's attention and, and that we can represent that the community is behind this. And I just, I don't think that the community is against this, by the way. I just don't think that everyone sort of wrapped their head around all the implications here. So at any rate, I just, I don't want to imperil our relationship with the MSBA. And I think, I, I would hope that they would understand kind of how this, how this is playing out and that our goal is to get a project that people are 110% behind.
Jennifer? Now, after listening to everyone, I'm, I'm quite sure that I don't have anything new to add. So I will be recycling comments that have, that have already been spoken. I am torn. I do think that it's really important to get community input. I don't know that we've had the opportunity. I, I sort of feel like it would be great if the MSBA could be understanding that we, this is a significant change or a change, whether or not it's significant, a change from what we were anticipating. And at this time, you know, this isn't the time to sort of, for me, I think, to do a quick turnaround of the community input process and, and try to fit this in before this letter has to be signed. Only it may, in large part because of what's happening right now in our, in the world. And so families are under a lot of stress. I don't know how much bandwidth people have to put their energy towards, towards this right now. At the same time, I really don't want to say, I don't want to turn down a project with the MSBA. That, like, I, I, that's a really hard stop for me. You know, that's something we've all been saying is important to us, that we want to partner with the MSBA, we want to partner with them. They're willing to partner with us. I don't, I cannot imagine us saying no to that. But I do think it's important to, to have these conversations with the community and explain why this might be a very good idea for us to do. So I, so again, I have nothing new to add. That's sort of like, that's where I'm torn. I mean, it'd be great if we could get feedback. I just don't know that we can do it before the 25th. If we can't get MSBA to, you know, give us an extension, I don't know what we're going to do. I, I just can't imagine, I'm, I'm leaning towards saying yes to signing the letter because I just can't imagine not signing it. We need this money. They may not offer us again for a long time.
Helen, why don't you, why don't we do this? Why don't you?
Ben wanted to say something first and then.
Yeah, I just will add one thing. I, I don't think this is a go or no-go. I think staying in the game at MSBA right now allows us then to continue to do the work with the community around four and five sections. Okay? So I, I really think you can, you can do both here. Keep yourselves in the game, keep it moving. I think, I think it's more, honestly, my opinion is it's more likely that the, that the Pierce community will be upset that we're delaying two months or through the summer. Rather than that we did not, because we can still get the four versus five thing worked out over time. Now, and because, yeah, so I'll just stop there.
And how, how is it, I'm not understanding how we can get four versus five worked out.
I, I, I don't think, I, I, it is possible, okay? There is some world of possibility, okay? So I'm not going to say it's impossible. It's very unlikely that, that MSBA changed their enrollment. Without them changing their enrollment, they don't, they don't go to five sections. So I think ultimately the choice that will come, that'll come down to us will be, will be MSBA on a four section or doing it alone with a five section.
So I think we run two risks.
I need time to figure, you need time to work through the process, figure that out, that question out.
Helen, I just wonder if we could, if a way that we could go forward to understand the implications of a vote tonight is if, I know you have a very good relationship with the MSBA. You've been our liaison with them on many projects before.
All the people there, yes.
And so I, I wonder if the best way for us to proceed is not for you to reach out tomorrow to explain that the school committee is very committed to moving forward with construction at Pierce. We're very committed to partnership with the MSBA. But with everything with COVID-19 right now, you know, there just, a lot of stuff is upside down. And ask them if there is ability to have a, a decision in a month to push the meeting, if they're, if, and to see if they're even moving their own meeting. And if, and if not, and if we're in a position that they need us to sign by next Wednesday and we will just have another meeting before, we can have it on Wednesday and we can get the.
No, we also need the select, we need Mel Kleckner to sign. And in order for him to sign, he needs to have the select board, which meets on Tuesday.
I guess we can, if you're able to get that information back before Tuesday and we could even go ahead and notice the meeting right now. So we have it ready to go on Tuesday. You can get the additional information we have and hopefully we have time for public process in this.
I think we should just be clear, we are delaying the project at least two months by doing that, by asking to go, you know, in June because their next meeting is the end of June and I assumed that meeting would happen. So, you know, you go, you start moving the whole, as, as Susan knows very well, what happens with project, you know, deadlines and stuff, everything will be moved back. And we will be delaying quite a bit. Two months becomes double that really in the, in the scope of a project. You know, if that's.
I do think that, but these are extraordinary times, Helen.
I mean, no. I understand that, I understand that. And I, and I hear what people are saying. And in the best of all possible worlds, I would want that too. I would have wanted us to do a different process right now. Life.
I want to, can I, can I say something? Listen, I mean, we're all using the language of partnership with the MSBA. I mean, I think we also like, need to just sort of like level set our own expectations and understanding of what that relationship is. Like, this is not a partnership, right? Like, this is, like, they are the state and we are not very great clients who tend to be quite difficult and tend to be, argue amongst ourselves and kind of not follow through on our commitments that they spend a lot of time with us on. And they have money and we don't. And I mean, I think that we need to understand that this isn't, that the MSBA is not a person. There are of course people who work at the MSBA with whom we have respectful relationships. It is an agency and it has a mandate and it has interests. And they have their own problems, right? Like.
They watch our, and they will watch our broadcast.
And they are going to watch our broadcast, fine. But I mean, I think that we really need to be realistic here. There is no like, oh, there's a coronavirus epidemic and we just kind of can't cope with like trying to make a decision about whether or not we want to accept $50 million from you, maybe, right? There are arguably towns that have more need on the basis of our balance sheets, you know, that have, like, that have worse infrastructure, right? And that frankly are easier to work with. And all we're doing by signing a letter is just saying yes.
Let's move forward and see where we go.
Conversation. And I just want to say, I mean, this isn't just about the Pierce community. We should stop targeting the Pierce community now because I do not want the Pierce community, whoever that is, you know, to be the target of acrimony and ire for the next two years around these discussions. We have an entire Brookline community that is all putting their tax dollars, money, effort and votes into this. You know, we need to engage the entire community over a very long period of time and understanding what the hell is going on here.
And, and, and making it clear what our tenure process is and where we're going.
And we also just need to realize, right, that like, we're talking about the Pierce community. With all due respect to you Pierce parents, the babies who are going to be the incoming, like, kindergarten class are going to be conceived during the coronavirus epidemic, right?
Actually, no, that, well, it may even be after that.
Maybe a couple, maybe in a few more years, right? Like, they're not here yet, you know? Like, almost all of the children who are currently at Pierce will all be graduated. This is a long, long process and like, we need to move forward with this.
Helen, are you going to make a motion today or are you going to reach out to the MSBA and, and consider an alternative? I think we're at that, we've, we've probably all had a chance, we all know where we are at. I think we can see, you know, get a sense of where people's votes were be. Are you making a motion this evening or are we revisiting this?
Mixed, I must say. I am very mixed because I would like, you know, a greater majority of the school committee to vote for this. I think it's, it's a problem if we don't. I may be wrong, you know, maybe just, you know, having a majority is fine. I, I'm trying to think on my feet here right now. Could we, would people entertain possibly voting tonight, but with a caveat to attempt? I, I think, I think Jennifer, you were the one who said, trying to have a Pierce meeting right now is, is not a good timing. I mean, you know, to, people are thinking about their survival and about, you know, all the anxieties that are going along with it. I can't imagine having a meeting right now about this.
I don't think you'd be able to have it between now and a week from now.
Yeah, and I think what it ends up, you're shaking your head, I don't know what you mean by that.
Your shaking is a grain, correct?
No, I don't think we can have a meeting in the next week and engage the entire community to get them to wrap their head around this.
You know, the other option is vote yes tonight and have that meeting in May, you know, when, when we can. Hopefully we'll be back in school. And if we determine at that meeting that it doesn't make sense, we'll withdraw. But at least let's move forward with the process.
Sounds like you're making a motion then?
Yes, okay, I'm going to make the motion and I guess we'll, we'll figure out. I mean, I don't, I don't, yes, Suzanne, maybe you can.
I was just going to say I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have to do by roll call vote. Helen?
Yes.
Susan? No. Sharon? Sharon, are you muted?
She said yes.
Oh, she said yes, I'm sorry. David?
No.
Barbara? You're muted.
No, Barbara said no.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Suzanne? I vote no. Michael?
Yes.
Is that's everybody? We have.
Four.
Five to four.
Five to four. So the motion passes via vote of five to four.
Hopefully the, well, hopefully they'll approve us in April.
All right, so we have an update on Helen, I think, is, are you giving the update on behalf of the superintendent?
Unless somebody else wants to, I'm happy to see the floor, but I do have.
But could I just make a comment that it is eight to three? And I believe BIG has another meeting if there's.
Just to give you the update, I'm, I'm muted, just to give you the update, BIG has now switched to live streaming of the other meeting. And Robin is recording us via WebEx. And then somehow magically that, that WebEx version becomes part of the overall recording. So we're not live streaming, but it is being recorded and it will be posted in public. So we have, yeah, so that's, that's where we're at. So Helen, are you giving the update or has someone else had wanted to give that?
Yeah, no, no, I, I'll do that. And I'm just looking for the minutes from the meeting that haven't been approved yet. But at least Robin was kind enough to share them and of course, right, and I had it prepared here. And of course, it went away. Just one second, here we go. Okay, so we met on March 17th, two of us, David, Susan, Jennifer and myself, along with Lisa Richardson and Glenn Kuchar, joined us in the meeting.
This you made in the hour.
What happened? What happened?
I think Jennifer, are you, are you muted on purpose or?
Did you want to say something? No, you're okay.
Great.
We met on the the 17th, um, Lisa Richardson joined us, Glenn Kutter from the executive director of the MASC joined us. Uh, all virtually like this, you can watch it on, um, BIG. And anybody at home can watch it on BIG also. At, uh, at the meeting, we talked about, um, what we had done in the past in terms of a superintendent search. And that, um, we would, uh, be interested in posting a notice for an interim superintendent soon with the expectation that, uh, the person would be be begin in July of 2020. And that, uh, basically using the same criteria as we had used in the summer of experience as a superintendent and, um, that we would be conducting interviews probably virtually. We discussed outreach to potential candidates and where the notice might be posted and, um, and that I would update you here at this meeting and that the next meeting will take place on April 9. What we had determined was to, and, um, actually, I think Ms. Richardson will be posting soon the actual job posting in that we talk about beginning interviews on the, uh, the week of the 13th and that we would be, um, getting together as, uh, in executive session of the interim search committee to go over the applications on, uh, the 9th of April.
Helen, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you, on that job posting, was there any decision made about whether the posting a candidate for interim superintendent would be eligible for our permanent superintendent?
We we determined that we would continue to not allow the person to be, uh, permanent, to apply for the permanent position, that we we felt it was important to leave, let the community decide and think about what, uh, and not think, let the community work on that search process and not interfere with it in terms of having somebody who's in the position applying for it, where we know the candidates might not apply because of that.
Any other questions about that process?
Anybody else want to add anything? Who was there? Okay. Thank you. To be continued.
Um, and then, I'm just, so sorry, I'm re-pulling up the agenda. I believe that that brings us to the end of our public session, but.
I think you're right. Because I was just looking for it again, too.
Yeah, it's, it's hard when you're doing everything on the phone, because you're on the computer.
Right, or if you're doing it even on your iPad, it's hard.
Okay, we have new business, uh, we do have new business yet, next. Anyone, items of new business that are real priorities? All right, and so then we have need for an executive session. Uh, Robin, the language for tonight's executive session is not on this version of the agenda. Could you read that?
Sorry, Julie?
Yes.
Point of order, we need to have this transportation contract voted or award voted. I wasn't able to get in touch with Matt to find out what the, um, increase was over the last year that wasn't in his memo. So he had a family, um, obligation tonight, so I wasn't able to reach him to find out what the difference was, and I couldn't access the contract from home.
Okay.
I don't know what the committee would like to do, because we do need to award this contract.
When does it need to be signed by?
Well, we're already late, so, um, it's just the award and the contract can get signed at later. You're awarding the bid at the very least to, um, we did get a savings on the Mecca bus, um, costs. We just did not, um, I just don't have the pricing from last year or from the last contract.
Okay, uh, Mary Ellen, if we're already late on awarding it, does a week, a late, a week of us being later matter at all? Or do?
Given, sort of, uh, well, we'll take advantage of the current environment to our, we'll, we'll see if that helps. We'll, I'll follow up with Matt, we'll get that to you and, uh, hopefully then it can get put on any consent agenda.
Okay, yeah, Robin, if you, Mary Ellen, if you send that information around via email, then we'll add it to the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Robin, if you could just note that for next meeting. And then, um, you have, uh, Robin, would you be able to read that language? I'm, I'm sorry, I still haven't, you said you just sent it to me. All right.
Hi, I didn't mean to like scare you or anything. Um, the BEU thing is gonna blow up.
Wait, no, we're not in, Sharon? Sharon, we're not in executive session yet? Does she know that we're not, is there a way to mute her?
Yes.
Don't think we can. I think she muted herself.
Okay, great. Um, so she just muted herself. And I'm sorry, Robin, it's not, okay, here we go, executive session. So I'm gonna make a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. For purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with the non-union personnel, non-aligned personnel. For purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, Unit A, Unit B, and paraprofessionals. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And we will not be reconvening in public session. So I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Gatto? Mr. Permian?
Yes.
Ms. Sharlefsky?
Yes.
Ms. Monopoly?
Yes.
Mr. Clever?
Yes.
Dr. Abramowitz, are you with us? I think she might have stepped off. She's not with us right now. Ms. Fetterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Wolf Dickoff? And the chair votes yes. So we will be moving into executive session. Robin, was there additional language that I needed to say?
Just that you would not be, will not be reconvening in open session.
And we, that is correct. We will not be reconvening in an open session.